Members of the public joining the Zoom, these representatives using the raise hand function to have their participants from Zoom, will make requests at the Q and A. If you're only joining by phone, you can press the star nine to raise your hands while starting testimony, please state your name and address for the record. The chair reserves the right to designate a specific point of the hearing at which point testimony may be offered, iteration of comments, uh, comment period afforded to each individual and or entity, again, according to number of individuals and entities permitted to speak. And as in any public hearing, testimony will have a particular meaning, having the most common commentary, and this is a good quality. The chair reserves the right to send a testimony on the basis of the evidence given in that public hearing. With that said, can we now have a roll call? Um, Adam?
Aye.
Weeks.
Here.
Zigma.
Here.
And Wolters here as well. Uh, that is a form of attendance, and we will start the meeting. Um, first, I'm actually going to move the public hearing, uh, for thirty-six Norfolk up to the top. Uh, this is a public hearing, um, for the planned business development, um, and how quickly can we begin?
Sure. Um, Town of Easton Public Hearing Notice. The Easton Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six-thirty P M. The Colleen Corona Room, Easton Town Hall, one thirty-six Elm Street, and remotely over Zoom, on the application received from Walter Hermeno on behalf of Chris McPherson, President of Central Ceilings Inc., for a special permit, planned business development under Easton Town Code Chapter Two Thirty-five Zoning, Two Thirty-five dash fifty-six Special Permits, and Two Thirty-five Attachment One, Appendix A-one. Traditional Zoning District's Table of Use Regulations, E thirteen, Planned Business Development to allow the construction of a building addition located at thirty-six Norfolk Avenue, Southeastern Massachusetts, Assessor's Map Thirty-four U, Lot Seven C. The virtual meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Copy of the application and plan may be viewed on the town website. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org.
All right. Thank you. Um, and there is the request for continuing this public hearing. And do I have the motion to continue until the next scheduled visit, the thirtieth episode or the January sixth? Do I have the motion to continue to January sixth?
Which one is that?
Motion, I'll make it, motion to continue the public hearing for thirty-six.
Norfolk Avenue.
Norfolk to, um, January sixth.
Kevin, second.
All right. Um, uh, a few more comments?
Questions?
Questions?
Well, they've asked to continue, so.
That's right. Okay. Um, so roll call both. Um, Zigma?
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
And Wolters and I as well. We continue to the sixth of January. Um, continuing with the, uh, public hearing, um, continuance, we have a continuance request for five thirty-one, public sheet.
Motion to continue public hearing for four thirty-one, Fundy Street. Kevin.
Second.
All right. Um, all in favor?
Um, and just for clarification, that's also being continued to one-six.
Yep.
Thank you. Motion, uh, continue to one-six. Uh, Kevin?
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Zigma?
Aye.
And Wolters aye as well. All right, we have a request for, um, another continuance, um, continued site plan review for six ninety Depot Street.
Motion to continue site plan review for six, six twelve Washington Street to what date?
I believe it's January sixth.
January sixth. Kevin?
Second.
All right. Um, favor Kevin?
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Zigma?
Aye.
And Wolters aye as well. And we got one more continuance, um, just to get these all out of the way. Uh, we have a continuance for the public hearing for one fifty-four Elm Street, um, to January sixth as well.
Motion to continue public hearing for one fifty-four Elm Street to January sixth. Kevin?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, Zigma?
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And Wolters aye as well. All right. Um, moving on.
Did we want to do six ninety? I think.
This is six ninety.
We did six twelve.
No, we said, we did six ninety, not six twelve. Six twelve's here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, before jumping back to six twelve, I just wanted to make the continuances done.
Okay.
Uh, so moving on to, uh, six twelve Washington Street, continued site plan review.
Continued site plan review for six twelve Washington Street to January sixth.
Uh, no, exactly. He's, he's, he's here.
I'm here.
Yes, you're up.
Everybody here, one, Greg Driscoll of JD Civil, we are representing, um, with Chief Godfrey, representing, um, Godfrey Auto here tonight for their site plan.
Do you have a flash drive?
Uh, I do not. I just, I have it all.
Okay. So to get it on the screen, you have to hit the Windows button. It needs an adapter.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it to boot up real quick before I plug it in.
Dip this in though. Do you have an H D M I port?
I do. I just wait for it to boot up.
Oh, all right. Sorry. Having trouble plugging it in.
Sure. Shit. Oh.
Yeah.
No, what?
Yeah, I don't see it, but I have it.
I was looking forward to it.
It's not here because it was continued, right? According to the, according to the agenda, it was continued.
It, that just means that we, has been continued? Um, we didn't know whether it would be continued or not. We, that was an oversight on our part, not including it in the packet.
Yeah, it's not in the packet.
I mean, it, you had, have seen it previously, but we should have put it back in the packet. That was an oversight on our part.
Do you have a question?
Yeah. Yep.
My client's not coming up right right now, so I'm just trying to move it.
Would you like to check out some of the hardware as well?
Yeah.
This, this is why I asked for a flash drive, so we could just plug it into the computer.
Great, when it works.
Yeah.
I have a cellular connection and I had it all open, ready to go, but.
We've got all the members.
Madam Chair, do you want to move on to another?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so next time, the, the, um.
Is Suzanne was, uh, uh, may I ask, who's coming in for the A and R plan?
Um, Luke, and also we have, we're gonna have, um, we're gonna have Mike promote.
And Stephanie, we're gonna do that one.
I know that it's, it's very straightforward, so.
Let me promote.
May take some of the pressure off while Greg, we're not all staring at him, waiting for.
I think Luke's gonna be on.
Is, are they?
I promoted.
Okay.
Do we need to have the U S C to like to done, have Luke to take down?
Do I have to just stop sharing?
Looks like.
I wanna just stop sharing here.
Lucas on.
Okay, can you promote it?
I do it.
Again.
China.
Hello, um, Mr. Clark?
Is there a second to go?
Yes, there again.
Like a phrase.
Oh, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, we can hear you.
All right.
You do something.
Turn your video off.
All right, let's see, how do I turn that on? Let's go. Start video. There we go.
Suzanne, I think you need to get rid of, there we go.
All right, perfect, there we go. Hi.
Good.
If you could speak for the record, please.
Sure. Uh, my name is Lucas Clem from Clem Land Surveying, uh, representing Robert Carroll for this, um, A and R plan before you. The plan is for two Howard Street. We're proposing to, um, actually, do you want me to share my screen or?
Yes, that would be great.
Oh, you gotta join her. Let's see.
I'm not sure if, can you see it now?
Um, we can't see it at this point.
All right, let me see. You. Share screen. There it goes. And click on here. About that.
Yes, yes, we have it.
There we go. All right, so, um, this may have come before you back in May or June. Um, the applicant went before the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a variance for Lot One, an area variance. They're proposing to keep this historic dwelling, uh, number two and relocate it to Lot One. And, um, so that's why we're planning on creating this lot line here between Lot One and Lot Two. Lot Two will meet all of the, um, the zoning requirements. Both of the proposed lots will have, uh, plenty of frontage on public ways, and we're also proposing to create this, uh, parcel three. It's mostly a wetland lot, and that's, um, strictly for conveyance purposes in the future, just so it doesn't get stuck with Lot Two. Um, I think that's all, very simple. I can take any questions.
Um, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think, I, I wasn't paying one hundred percent attention when Lucas first started talking, but the board will recall that in May, you commented on this, and I think in, in a supportive way for the variance that would allow this to happen and move forward. So this is a simple A and R plan, um, and the board can endorse it.
Uh, board members, any comments?
Yep.
Like, uh, do I have a combination to?
Endorse.
Endorse thing?
Yeah.
Listen.
Motion to endorse the plan, A and R as proposed.
Second.
All right, uh, any further comments, questions? All right, uh, Zigma?
Aye.
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 And Wolters aye as well. Uh, it has been endorsed. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Awesome, thank you.
So I think you just need to plug in the H D M I cord.
Suzanne has to work her magic.
I have to just share to, and you have to do.
There you go.
There we are.
All right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bearing with me. All right, so, uh, Greg Driscoll here from JD Civil, representing James Godfrey for Godfrey Auto. So since we were here last, we addressed comments from peer reviewer, um, Beta Group, and, uh, we've got the, um, sent that in last week, and got a response from Beta. They did their review of the revisions, um, about that today, and, um, what we've done to address the comments, um, we, we removed the stormwater basin that we had previously proposed in the front area, as it was within a hundred feet of the, the building right here, uh, the house at six fourteen Washington Street. Um, and that was pointed out by Beta that we were too close to them. We've, we're in a hundred, within a hundred feet of a structure, and, um, the bottom of the basin is higher than the basement of the building. Uh, that's allowed, so since we didn't have any space on the site, the site's only seventy-five feet wide, um, we had nowhere else to put it, so we removed it. Um, we are meeting the redevelopment, um, standard number seven of the Stormwater Handbook, um, by reducing the pervert area on the site. Uh, we are reducing the amount of, um, pollutants and, and increasing the amount of, uh, runoff that soaks into the ground by having more green space on site. So that's how we're meeting stormwater management for redevelopment site. As a redevelopment site, we don't have to meet the stormwater standards to, um, all the stormwater management standards, just to the extent practical, and the proximity of these buildings here and their basements being pretty much right at the groundwater that we found when we did test pits out there. Um, we need to have a two-foot separation for any stormwater, um, infiltration basins or subsurface, um, uh, stormwater management's, um, control measures, and that's still gonna be above the basement and within a hundred feet of those structures, so it's kinda, we're kinda cupped to a rock and hard place where we can't, um, provide any kinda stormwater management, uh, devices on the project. Uh, we can just do what we can as far as reducing pavement area by increasing the building roof area and also, um, by increasing green space on the site. So Beta's letter acknowledges that. Um, they did suggest that maybe we can do some other type of stormwater control measures and that we might not have to, they, they made a curious, um, suggestion that we won't have to have a two-foot separation of groundwater, um, because it's a redevelopment project, a redevelopment project. I've never come across that, and I never had a review engineer suggest that or approve that. Um, I've looked through stormwater, stormwater management, the stormwater management handbook to see if there was any way to get a waiver or anything for the two-foot separation, and that's just not available, there's no, um, path to ask for a waiver from that. So it's not something I feel comfortable with, and as the, you know, professional engineer that's stamping the plans and responsible for this design, uh, I wouldn't feel comfortable introducing something like that into the design where, you know, we'll be within a hundred feet of one of these structures, and if that causes issues down the road, then that's, that's on me, not on the review engineer. So that's kinda, that's my stance on that. Um, that was pretty much their stormwater eight comments, um, and their SW twelve comments. They said maybe there's, there's some, some other places on site that we could maybe do something, um, and taking into account six random lane right here, that's also, you know, pretty much shakes up the entire site if you, if you draw out a hundred foot, um, buffer or a hundred foot from the, that foundation. So it's really not much opportunity to do anything on site. We, another thing that we looked at, um, when we were first designing the site was to maybe reuse the septic system, although that is within a hundred feet of this foundation. But we did look at reusing the septic system as a drainage device, um, but we couldn't get the, um, the pipes from the roof to flow into that. It was, we didn't have enough pitch, we couldn't raise the site up high enough without causing a bunch of walls and, and other improvements that would make the development a lot more expensive by bring and fill in and stuff like that, so. Um, but they do say in their report that we do meet, um, that we are providing an improvement over the existing conditions, and that's really the standard that we need to meet. So, um, I think that, you know, with the, the site being such a small site and a redevelopment and a development, very developed area of town, um, that we've done what we can, so.
Mr. Clark, um, Stephanie?
So, um, I did get a chance to read Beta's report, um, and again, they, they stress that they, because it's redevelopment, um, you need to meet the more strict requirements of stormwater device, it, it's actually stormwater treatment and management, um, to the maximum extent practicable. I find it just a little interesting, um, Mr. Driscoll's comment about not having any experience with the reduced separation, um, basically feeling like you, you put, you designed this with that basin in that location. But my suggestion is that, um, in order, Beta's report does indicate that they have, they have met the standard to an extent by reducing the impervious surface, and we talked about this, and I, I mentioned it at the last meeting, that it would be great to see more of that impervious surface. I, I talked about a buffer, more of a buffer between the properties, and is there an opportunity to actually reduce some of the impervious surface and make that a vegetated area? And then the other comment I had, Mr. Driscoll talked about, they were addressing the potential pollutants. This is a garage, they do repairs on site, they're proposing a, um, channel drain, floor drains. But one of the comments that Beta did make was, if I remember it correctly, that there is a pitch from the inside, um, floor that goes down, and there is a potential for, um, some pollutants perhaps, or some, um, runoff. And, and I'd like, so if you could address that and how do you treat it?
Yeah, the, um, the floor drains will be right, right at, at the doors, that's how it's designed.
In the width of the opening.
The full width of the opening.
So if it's a twelve-foot door, there's a twelve, uh.
Would you mind, sorry, would you mind just saying, are you considering?
Yes, because, yes.
Thank you.
James Godfrey, six twelve Washington Street, owner of Godfrey Auto. Um, the question about the drainage at the doors, the openings of the doors will be twelve feet, the garage doors, the drains will be twelve feet as well. They'll all be tied into a central location that goes to a gas trap, so no pollutants and all pollutants in the building, whether it be motor oil or antifreeze. Everything is double-walled tanks, uh, they are all self-contained. They contain, all the regulation for the EPA now is anything has a double-walled tank, so anything in there will be double-walled, which will prevent that from any spillage of any, um, stored fluids on the facility, and then the drainage that each exit of each bay door would retain any pollutants that may, they would all develop through the gas trap and be separated in that manner. Does that answer? Okay.
And, and again, if the applicant would be amenable to adding, reducing some of the impervious surface?
If I may, the, the amount of surface we need, we need to, we need to retain as much surface, parking surface as we can for, uh, vehicles that enter and exit. We have trucks, they're thirty feet long, they have to come in, they have to be able to turn around, so any of the, um, hashtag areas, we would not be able to develop any type of greenery in there, only because they need to be level with the facility, to be able to turn vehicles around in there, and vehicles being delivered to us that are broken down. Um, we are at over the ten percent of the greenery in the front where the basin was originally gonna be. Um, we can put low-height growth in there to add some greenery out front, but without, uh, any obstruction to traffic exiting or entering from one thirty-eight. So to the, um, to the right of the entrance, I'd say, or is it?
Over here?
Nope, up in the front where the basin would have been.
Okay.
Uh, we can add greenery, whether it's shrubbery that's low-growth, um, be under two feet, trimmable, maintainable, um, that's feasible. We were gonna add, um, some greenery to the front of the building, um, but that would basically be floral and decorative, but it would still be, uh, flower beds that would, but they cannot interfere with the, um, the handicap parking or anything like, or the parking area itself.
Yeah, there's a little.
So I have, I have some more questions in response to that.
Yeah, this area right here should probably be green too, it's not matching, but those are a couple trees.
So again, it would seem that the area that was going to be the infiltration basin would be a prime area for the plantings.
Yes.
Um, can you explain why you can have, because another, and we've been talking about this a lot at meetings recently, and we'll probably be talking about it a lot more going forward in response to the, um, changes in climate where we have more intense days of heat and heating.
Mm-hmm.
Heat island effect, is that what you got?
Heat island effect. That, that actually would be a great location for some shade trees. Could you explain why, why that, because it looks like you have a clear line of sight when you're coming out, you, you wouldn't plant them such that they would be blocking someone approaching from the exiting.
So if I can?
Yeah.
So in this area, this is Duncan Dylan's, this is owned by McLaughlin. Uh, there's a tree in here that grows so large that the entrance and exit from them and partially from us, we've had to trim that tree ourselves, that impairs your vision on one thirty-eight and being a highway, a state highway. Um, like I said, low, low growth, but anything tall is gonna, is gonna obstruct your view from entering and exit traffic.
And what do you consider tall? And, and I'm not being challenging, I just.
Anything that would.
Anything taller than.
So if you.
So, Greg, would you mind doing that, just as we have, we have one of our members is, um, she's, she's on, uh, I think, so she can do it as well. Thank you.
So if you pull to the exit and your car is, let's say your car is twelve feet long.
Yep.
Um, you sit back in the car about six feet, so you're six feet from the exit to safely stop and then observe traffic and enter or exit the parking lot at that time. Anything in this area that would be higher than three feet, um, would obstruct your view. So any type of fruit tree, oak tree, maple tree, pine tree, um, anything to that effect is gonna be an issue blocking sight.
So you could plant some shrubs there?
Yes. Oh, yes. And like I said, being. And like I said, being, I would have to say under four feet for mature growth. And then trimmable at that point too, whether they be evergreen, holly, whatever would be native, obviously.
And the suggestion would be if you, I'm, I'm sure there were some native, low growth that don't require pruning and trimming.
There's some ground cover that'll grow, you know, a foot or two that doesn't require any, and can just naturally take its course. Yep.
Any more questions?
No.
Water members?
Yeah, I, I have a question. I don't remember, there was this review, where is the water going?
Where's the water going?
Yeah.
The water flows towards, um, one thirty-eight, that's the way it does. It flows right now and that's how it'll continue to flow off the side.
Where?
Towards the street, towards one thirty-eight.
Toward the, the road?
Yeah.
Those triangular cross-tatched areas, those are grass or dirt or?
That's, that's pavement.
It's just gonna be striped?
It's gonna be striped in order so when, like you said, when like a fly bag shows up or other type of truck, they're able to move it around the site.
I see.
Easier. And makes it easier for maintenance on the property, plowing and stuff like that. Cause it is, it's a very narrow site, I don't know if you've been there or, you know, the Duncan Donuts.
Been by it many times, I think.
You know, it's, it's, it's narrow site, so it's, you know, access for trucks is kinda challenging.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf? You had asked about a buffer. We did add that to the plan as well on the six fourteen side of the property. That will be.
The fence.
That will be a vinyl fence for the residents on that side of the property. It'll be six feet, six feet in height. And then just as it gets to the streets and our obstructed view, it'll go to three feet just for entrance, safety of entrance and exit of the parking lot.
If you are there, I have another question for you. Can you do something with the noise? You are so close to that residential.
So the noise, number one, the six foot vinyl. And number two, the design of the CWB Butler Buildings is producing the building. It's a double insulated wall, so any internal noise from the building will be much, much more improved than it ever was before, compared to what we have now for our structure. We also.
Bring up the, um, building plan real quick while you talk about it.
Let's see, on the other side.
The answer is there is insulation.
Yes, yes, they actually have a new product. I don't have the particular trade name for it. There is a particular product we're using, which is an insulated interior panel. So it's not only the building itself, but they have an insu- insulated panel as well that we've chosen to use with the structure with the building. So noise, and on the opposite side of the property, opposite six fourteen, we had already put a five foot vinyl fence, which Duncan Donuts was very happy with. Because it does deflect, it does deflect the noise than anything we produce out of the building.
And all the doors are gonna be on the Duncan Donuts side, so residential side will have.
Yeah, on the six fourteen side of the building, that'll be solid.
So you, you don't have windows facing the other?
I won't on that side. Uh, we will.
Rendering, I don't have rendering, excuse me, I have the floor plans.
This is just an artist rendering, this isn't, um.
Final.
How tall is the building?
Yeah, height will be twenty feet.
Twenty, I would say twenty.
But this, and as far as aesthetics as well.
As far as aesthetics for the facade, this is not a complete architectural design. There actually will be more, there'll be less steel and more stone involved in the facade of the building.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, John, could you, I don't know if you can see the, the images here as well?
Oh, the chair's over there and they can probably focus on it.
Yeah, she can see it.
Okay, you can see it, John?
Kind of.
I can see the floor plans. Oh yeah, you mean the, the building? Yeah, I can see the building too. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions from board, from the board? Do I have, so, um, with the opportunity to address, do you have comments from the stormwater? The next step would be to?
I think they've, I mean, that is their response.
Okay.
Either we accept it or not, right?
Yep. Or do I ask from the board?
I will put a motion to approve.
Okay.
Get them.
All right, uh, any more comments?
Questions?
Questions? I'll get them ready eventually, I promise. We're moving on. All right, uh, with that saying that, uh, Zigman?
Aye.
Kenna?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well.
Okay. Thanks for bearing with me tonight and appreciate it, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
If you could have continued patience with the tape. So next we have up, uh, six forty-two, six forty-four Turnpike Street, Walnut Tree. Is someone online?
What is the next? Mickey?
Yeah, that's six forty-two, six forty-four Turnpike, Walnut Tree.
Oh, they're on.
Oh, they're on?
They're, no, they're on Zoom and that's Suzanne. Greg, Greg was being helpful and plugged the HDMI back in, so.
All right.
Someday this will all be just pushing a button.
Actually, I don't think, I don't think I'm on those floors for this day, so I'd rather a soft, sturdy kind of rubber now. That makes me feel a little bit better.
We're all human then, right?
Yeah, we're all human. And we all just don't plug into the interfaces.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hello and welcome, if you could please introduce yourself and say your name?
Yeah, my name is Michael Peralta and I'm a senior civil engineer with PMP Consulting, Inc.
Welcome, Mr. Peralta, thank you, Dr. Davis. Do you have a presentation to share with us?
Samantha Crips from the office is going to do the presentation. And I'm here to provide the technical background on any of the stormwater management.
Excellent.
Hi, Samantha Crips, PMP Consulting. Thank you. So here we are at six forty-two and six forty-four Turnpike Street. This is the entire lot. We have a conservation restriction line in works with National Heritage to develop this front, a little over five and a half acre portion of the property. And the remainder of the property will be going to the Conservation Commission. And we are proposing a contractor bay building and contractor yard for the tree operation with Walnut Tree Services. We did receive a staff report letter from Stephanie Danielson and a peer review from Eric Diaz. We did get the revisions in, I think was it last week or the week before? I'd be happy to go over Stephanie's letter and our responses for all of the comments on the site. Stephanie asked if the applicant can explain if the conservation restriction line?
Sure, uh, one, one moment, Miss Crips, I'm sorry, Stephanie, I just wanted to say something.
I mean, I, I would just ask that she give a thorough overview of the project before responding to my comments. Because I think the board will be very interested in what the operation is and what is going to happen on the site.
Okay, yeah, um, so Walnut Tree Services specializes in tree cutting and manufacturing of mulch and wood chips. They clear properties around the area. And this will serve as their manufacturing operation. It will include storage of material, equipment. This building here is to basically just serve as more area to conduct their work. We are providing some employee parking up front here. And this gated portion will be the contractor yard, the proposed work and storage area. We do have some designated truck parking in the back over here and some storage bin area for the mulch and the wood chips. We are doing a full drainage design for the property as well as associated utilities. Come down here, here's the, the drainage included on site. There will be a retaining wall throughout the back on the National Heritage Conservation Restriction Line. We are in the works of getting that permit. I think we'll receive a draft permit in the upcoming weeks and we'll be happy to provide that once we have it. If I'm missing anything, um, the client is online tonight, I believe. I think Kate and Michael from Walnut Tree are available.
Oh, again, um, you talked about the manufacturing, but not what the manufacturing is. And again, um, it wasn't clearly spelled out in the narrative, but I, I would like you to explain what the manufacturing operation is on the site.
So they cut down trees around the area and they'll bring them to the site where they will chop them up further into mulch and wood chips for, I'm assuming, purchase.
Are they, are they not also processing them for fire logs?
Um, yes, that is included.
Okay.
Not fine though.
I'm not entirely sure on what they do with the material. This won't be a facility where people will come and purchase it at this lot. They, they might ship it to other contractors in the area and developers.
Okay, uh, Stephanie, do you have any?
Who are the abutters here?
The, well, again, um, could you?
If we can see, I don't know if there is a.
Can Samantha talk about the abutters?
Uh huh. So I'll go back to the first page here. So this is where we're proposing the work within this dashed line here. This is the entirety of their property. But once the conservation restriction line is in place, this will then become the town's. We do have a residential abutter to the northwest right here in the small parcel. And this is a truck yard for a shipping company. Um, this is all wetlands and restriction land.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mickey, I just have one other. Samantha mentioned that the applicants themselves are also online. Maybe they could get on and talk, again, just a little bit more about the operation. My understanding was from pre-matterings that they were going to be processing logs into firewood. Maybe I misunderstood that. Miss Crips said she thought that they would be shipping, they might be shipping things off-site. Certainly I, I understood that they would be using the mulch materials in their operations. They're, they cut trees and I understand they do landscaping as well. But maybe the owners could, um, explain a little bit more?
Hi, if you could please introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Kate Pesiva and I'm, um, office manager and HR manager at the Walnut Tree. Michael was going to join us, the owner, but he is stuck in traffic on his way back picking up the truck. So I just can talk a little bit about what's going to happen at the location, if that's. So basically there will be a main operation at, um, for the Walnut Tree. What we do is, um, obviously tree removing, tree cutting, um, tree, uh, tree pruning. And, um, at, um, this location we would like to do, um, sorry, I'm losing my voice, wood chip and, um, log, but not exactly a storage. We will bring the logs from the job site. And we have contractor who will come in and pick them up pretty much at the same day. We barely ever, right now we have, um, small yard in Stoughton. We barely ever have any wood chip or logs there that is stored like more than a day. Like kind of come and goes. We need, we'll have, uh, the building, we will have the parking for the big equipment like cranes. And we have an office on site as well. We also planning on producing the firewood that will be, uh, sell, sold.
Okay, thank you for what a little bit more details to what's gonna be happening, um, at the site.
So, um, I, I do, uh, Ms. Crips answered my comment about the conservation restriction and who would be holding it. And she's indicated that that will be held by the town through the Conservation Commission. So protection of adjoining properties, there is a residential, um, property that is a single family home. It is occupied right next door. It is kind of an anomaly with everything else that's on the site. It is now zoned industrial, so. But again, I think there needs to be sensitivity to the fact that they're living there. So one of my comments was, um, what measures they'll be taking to limit adverse potential noise and air quality impacts associated with this activity. So again, when you're mulching and, and grinding up that material, I'm sure that that's releasing particles into the air. And then, you know, there is some noise associated with the operation. So that was, that was one of my comments.
There is some residential on the other side of the street.
I'm sorry?
On the other side of the street, there is residential.
There is residential, correct, you were right, yep, yep.
Would it be possible that the applicant could speak to that?
Yeah, um, so the tree processing operation itself will be held more towards the rear of the property, towards the abutter and across the street. It is mainly designated for parking, employee parking and whatnot. And they will need some space to get to such parking. So the actual operation itself at least will be set back. It's about roughly a hundred fifty feet from the property line at the northwestern abutter. And we are providing plantings to screen the entirety of their property line. Regarding dust and whatnot, I'm sure the applicant will spray down any areas in dry spells.
And, and that, that was one of my comments too, was about the height of the material, that the plant material that's going to be planted and making sure that it's dense enough again to provide a suitable buffer. So could you talk? So could you talk about the plant material that you're proposing along the resident buffer?
Yeah. So up here we have some eastern red cedar and some northern white cedar. These up here are the red maples.
That's what you have planted for the noise remediation for the abutter?
Yes.
Uh, Stephanie, any more comments?
Yep, um, they should discuss the quantities of and how hazardous materials such as gasoline and oils that'll be used in the operation are going to be stored on site as well as spill containment and cleanup policies and procedures.
Yes, um, so for the truck parking in particular, because we have run into this before, that they do have potential to be higher pollutant loads, so we are including this containment berm around truck parking where this area specifically will be treated with a oil and gas separator that will treat all of this stormwater specifically for oil and gas, just in case there were leaks and spills in this area. Regarding the rest of the site, we did include a long-term pollution prevention plan in the stormwater report. To get into specifics, Mike would probably be better at answering the potential scenario.
Yeah, I'll hop, I'll hop in on this one too. Uh, the, the truck parking area, because it, it's considered a fleet of vehicles that are owned by the, uh, the applicant here. Um, we're, we segregated that out and the system we're going to be using is a jellyfish system, which is a, um, a hydrodynamic particle separator for the grits and cartridges with our, a type of mulch that will encapsulate any type of hydrocarbons. And it's been proven to be able to, to capture that. And there's a maintenance program that contact puts out to take care of that, that, that material. And, uh, we're not anticipating a quantity of this, but it's just in case we get it there. So that's, that's the treatment just for that. The other areas within the site also have hydrodynamic separators for floatables and grit. So any type of things that get into the, into the drainage system will be separated out and treated and segregated from getting into the, the recharge components. The, um, or discharging out to the detention basin. The, uh, the site, um, operation, there'll be, um, a stormwater pollution prevention plan. It's in the, in the process of being created following the MPDES permit for this project. And one of the things that we have to, uh, work a little more closely with the client is that operation, as, um, Ms. Danielson had mentioned, about how are you planning on fuel the vehicles offsite? Do you have something onsite you're proposing? Probably not, but we'll get that answer for you. And at the same time, uh, because of the operation, the spill prevention kits, like you would see in the trucking terminal, we're probably going to have some of those in and around the property and we'll work out with the, uh, with the client for the placement of these spill kits, uh, just for the just-in-case moments that something could happen. But we'll refine a lot of that and get back to, uh, the board on that.
Okay, so, um, but you will not have fueling operations for the trucks and vehicles on site, right?
That's probably a no and, um.
I think this is, is this not in the aquifer protection district?
Sam, the zoning table, if you will.
Um, it, it does not mention it.
So the equipment will not be maintained on this location?
It, it should not be ma- maintained and there should not be any fuel pumps. Like sometimes large op- operations that have large fleets have their own gasoline tanks on site and they fill from there, but that would not be allowed. That operation would not be allowed in the aquifer protection district.
Is the conservation committee get into that type of detail or is us?
It's us, it's, it's a zoning.
Yeah, it's a prohibited use. Sale or storage of fuel in aquifer protection area, it's prohibited.
Thank you for clarifying that. We'll make sure that, uh, if the client isn't aware, they will be aware of that prohibition.
That was discussed in our early meetings, with the pre-meetings we had.
I think it's both, both fueling and maintenance, oil changes, all this type of stuff cannot happen in this location.
Right.
There's a whole list of other prohibited uses.
Yeah, I don't think any, I don't think this qual- qualifies for any of those others, but definitely.
I, I have another question.
It might be maintenance of vehicles, like auto repair or something.
Auto repair and gasoline filling stations are not allowed. I think I'm, I think I'm almost done. Um, then my only other comment was that wall packs are sho- um, let's see, elevations of the exterior building should be provided. Um, that's part of the requirement for site plan review application. And then, um, you show wall pack lights on the exterior of the building. Specifications for the light fixtures and a photometric plan weren't provided either, so those, those were a couple of missing items.
Yeah, it, it will be some impervious, uh, surfaces here. What is going to be paved?
This, um, the hatched area you see here is pavement.
So all what I see in blue now is asphalt?
Yes.
Wow.
Three, three or five, I, I think I included that.
Conservation.
Is this the old driving range?
No, no, this is, um, an undeveloped part.
It is about right in the center.
So that's, um, there may be some large trucks parked, um, like that last parking space fairly close to their, their property.
The backyard.
The backyard, yeah.
Yes, it's, um.
That's where the larger vehicles will be parked, correct?
Correct.
Idling?
Yeah, that would be, that would be my question, is idling and the other, it, it's just close to the.
Oh, no, I, I would assume not. Um, I would assume if they are in this area, it is being, it's solely for storage. Um, because when they're conducting their operation, the trucks will be more so in an active mode. I would not expect any idling in this area. This is probably mainly for overnight parking and such, I'd assume. I'm sorry, the, um, the audio keeps cutting out. I didn't really get to hear. Mike, were, were you able to pick that up? I'm sorry, over here, I can't.
No, I, I didn't quite hear that. Uh, if you don't mind just repeating that once.
Sorry.
We are concerned of the backyard of the, uh, of the abutter. It will be.
Is there another microphone?
You will, you will see there are your trucks when they look back on the backyards. Hear them at morning when they start.
Sam, could you call up either the existing conditions drainage area map or the proposed drainage area map? The house is shown on that.
Yep.
In, in Google Map, behind that house, there is a big clearing that I believe will be part of your, uh, property. So there is no naturally occurring trees on the back of that house facing your property, so. That's what you are.
Yeah, that's what I, and there, I believe, I'm planting, they were showing, planting a single.
Look at the clearing behind the house.
Yeah, it's, that's going to be very noisy in the back for those folks.
Yes, they do definitely have, um, a backyard back here. This is the location of the existing home approximately. So at least they're a little further than the truck parking itself. Um, there are some existing trees back here and we are going to be providing those plantings around the perimeter of their property for screening.
Excellent, thank you.
Madam Chair, what are the hours of operation?
Um, I am not completely sure on that. The client may have a better idea. Um, I assume just whatever applies to your bylaw.
It has to be daylight.
So, uh, right now, the, uh, the operation starts around six in the morning. And, um, because it's industrial though, we were not aware that we need to have like end time. It depends on the season, like winter, summer, like in the summer it's usually later on and then the winter we usually down by four thirty-five, summer it's sometimes by eight.
So if I heard.
Like the trucks coming in and parking, um, not, not actually, um, not actually, um, doing any of the wood chip production or making any of the firewood or anything like that. Just, uh, trucks coming back and, um, parking and employees leaving.
And so I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly, are there six AM to eight PM?
Uh, yeah, about that. So again, like for the eight PM, like I would say the, the grinding and the wood, um, firewood production would be no later than I would say five, five, six PM. I need to confirm that with Michael. Again, get back to you on that.
And, uh, I think the bylaw is a seven o'clock, yeah, AM.
Uh, seven AM, right?
Yep. Either, either to six or seven at night. I don't think it goes.
I think it's seven AM.
It's definitely seven AM.
Seven AM to.
Seven AM to six or six, I think.
You need to figure out in the bylaws what it says.
I think you. I'm sorry, um, so the, the grinding wouldn't start until like eight, seven, seven thirty, eight. I am probably eight the earliest that would start. And then, um, like six AM, I would, I was saying more of the employee coming in to work and like leaving the lot. Because it's the van, sometimes the jobs are far away, so they leaving the lot earlier. Uh, no, it's not in the building. It's like outside, like in the back, as Samantha's mentioned, like on the back of the, of the property.
Yeah, I have, I have one, Mickey. Um, so the parking spaces that are sort of behind the residential area are intended for employees. What are the parking spaces towards the street in front of the gate being used for? I thought, I might have misunderstood, but I thought you said that there aren't going to be any customers coming here. So I'm just wondering what that parking is for.
Correct, that is, um, for additional employee parking and office use. Yes.
Isn't that for the people that work on the company? Because they jump on the, on the, on the trucks and they go.
That would be, that would be the spaces in the back that's secured. And then the spaces in the front, but, and there's a gate there, that the office staff that are coming and going, appointments coming in, people to meet with the office staff, um, that's what, that's, that's about there. Plus there's some parking there. Because there are going to be contractor bays on this site also, um, there's parking available for, uh, people operating those, uh, those bays.
So Madam Chair, I, I just heard something that I did not pick up in the application. Are you saying that there will be contractors who are renting that space that aren't part of the operation?
The building is set up that way. I'm not sure if they're going to take the whole building or they're going to have some available spaces. Kate, do you have an idea?
Yeah, there will be no contractors, like they're gonna, we don't, we need the whole entire space.
Okay, so you set it up in base.
Okay, thank you. That would have been a different application.
Yeah, no, we need the whole entire space. There is no space for contractors.
It would have been a mixed use. Yeah, yep.
But, I was just gonna say, so just to, to make sure I heard this correctly, so, but customers who are meeting with office staff will be using that parking space and meeting in the building?
Yes.
Yeah, so we do have, like, sometimes customer would drop off the check or just stop by to say hello, like those kind of. You're not planning on having like walk-in, like a store kind of business, just here and there.
Mickey, I can't hear you. I'm sorry. I, I don't know if you have a different mic that you can use.
All right, Alan is, can you hear me now?
Oh, so much better, thank you.
The mic is dead. Um, Alan and I can just share, it'll be awesome. So I think we've given you all a lot of food for thought. Um, would you like to come back to the board? Would you like to come back? Would, the next date would be the sixth of January? Would that give you enough time or would you like to continue past that or?
What is the next meeting after January the sixth? Since we're going to be back on the sixth or the first of the year with the Conservation Commission? So we should have all the peer review comments back to resolve the plans with the Conservation Commission for that night. And I just, I don't want to be
twentieth?
Not responding to your comments properly in that timeframe.
And so the next one will be the twenty-first? And the Tuesday the twenty-first. Will that, will that give you adequate time?
That'll let us resolve the conservation issues, get the National Heritage Letter evaluated and, and in for the Conservation Commission and give us some time in the meantime to coordinate with staff at, at the town offices to make sure that all your concerns are being properly addressed.
Excellent, thank you. All right, uh, board members, do I have a most?
Before, before we go to the margin, there is, there will be a serious issue of drainage here that will need to be addressed. Uh, and the conservation will be very animate about that. So I don't know how much time they need in order to prepare.
I think they've already received. I think they've already received, I, I took a quick look at this one. I think you've already received comments from the peer reviewer. And you're in the process of responding to that, correct?
Well, we already did, we already did.
You already did.
And, and we've expanded it. He has some really good suggestions and we took that to heart and we did expand the systems out. And it went back to him for re-review and he just didn't have enough time to get it done for the meeting this week. So we want to give him some more time to, to see what we did to expand it out. And, and we did address all his concerns and how we wanted to make sure it was going to function properly.
All right, excellent. So, Board Members, do I have a motion to?
We should continue to, um, February? January sixth, the next?
January, January twenty-first? The twenty-first, which is a Tuesday.
January twenty-first, second.
All right, any more comments? Seeing none. Zygmunt?
Aye.
Katam?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. We will see you all back on the twenty-first of January. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sir Rob, for your, your remarks and we, you look forward to getting this done for you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the request to release Sawmill Village lots twelve, thirteen, eighteen, and nineteen.
We have someone?
So do we have someone for that or?
Oh, that's me. No, the applicant's not here.
Okay.
So this is Sawmill. They have constructed the first part of the road. So you'll, the board who was involved with the permitting of this project, which did not, Mickey, were you on this?
I don't, not speaking.
No, no. So Sawmill is really kind of two, I want to call it nodes of development, the east side and the west side. They have started construction on the east side and constructed the roadway, installed the utilities. They have not started on the west side yet because the developer wants to, is building and wants to sell out mostly the east side before he starts on the west side. So the road has been constructed. We had a street inspection done. And what the developer is looking for is the release of three or four lots that he has already sold and they're getting ready to close on each of those. One is supposed to close this week, if possible. So the board is asked to vote to release those lots.
All right, Board Members, any comments?
We just automatically release those or we need to do?
Well, they're asked.
Architectural review or anything else?
No, there is no, the board already did architectural review on those, reviewed all the, so they have a set of building designs that they have been working from, that the board previously approved. So from those approved plans, someone who wants to purchase one of the lots would select which house design they want and they don't need to come back to the board.
Okay.
Do, uh, do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to release the lots that have presented, Katam?
Second.
All right, any further comments? Seeing none. Katam?
Aye.
Aye.
Zygmunt?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well.
Mickey, why don't I try?
Can I grab one of those mics? That actually just might be.
Um, I think that, I think that will work.
Yes, bring the whole stand over.
You can do karaoke.
All right, Joanne, can you still hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you perfect now.
All right, perfect. Of all of the people, I'm probably one with the softest voice here, so not good for, for the mic to go out. All right, moving on to design review, we have brought for the board old Forge Commons architectural plans, lot number one. The board has received in their packet, the, the summary and conclusion from Beta. And we also have included in there an email from Dale Karister and Stephanie's comments as well. So, this would be an approval or?
An approval.
An approval for lot number one.
For the design?
For the design.
Architectural.
Yes, architectural design. Uh, any Board Members have any comments?
Yeah, I have a question, maybe for Stephanie. How do you define what was the conditions before the building started? And what the conditions are today and they're going to be after that? To determine that actually the development didn't introduce negative issues to the drainage?
So that's all part of the review process upfront when the, we have the peer review done? So you'll recall, in your set of plans, there's an existing conditions plan that's required that shows existing grades, what is currently on the ground, whether it's vegetated, wooded, and again, all the grading. And then the developer shows what the proposed conditions are. And those are reviewed by our peer reviewer. And you may recall, there were a lot of comments during the review process on the stormwater design and recommendations that were taken into consideration and into the read, several iterations of, of the project. So then you look at the plans that are submitted to ensure that the grading is consistent with the design and the plan that was approved. And in this instance, because there were concerns that were raised by a butters, we had Beta do a secondary review of that to give their opinion on whether the grades that were proposed would pose, impose an additional drainage issue or would not. And in this instance, when they reviewed it, they determined that there would not be an increase in, in stormwater runoff.
And to?
A net.
To clarify this as well, Beta went out during the last serious rain.
They did a desk review, looking at the plans and then the floor, the building plans. And they did go out and during the rainstorm, which was shortly after they did their review, just to see what was happening on site. Particularly as part of the ongoing construction stormwater management process, because that's different than what your finished conditions are. You've designed your stormwater system for when everything's complete and done and the site stabilized. But you have to manage the stormwater on site during construction. And there have been a couple of problems out there. And there was still a little bit of silt that was running off. And there were measures that were discussed with Mr. Humphrey. Beta, Matt Crowley from Beta met Mr. Humphrey on site during the storm. And Matt gave additional comments and suggestions. And we have them on contract to go out during any big storm events to just keep checking and making sure that things are under control.
Will, will it be another inspection after?
Yes.
The, the building has been finished and the?
We will have an as-built review done.
Before they put along for, or after?
Generally, it's after.
After, right? When everything has settled.
Yes.
There is another inspection.
Yes. And I will tell you, I mean, most projects, we wouldn't have an ongoing inspection during bad weather conditions. But because there have been some issues here and there have been concerns raised by neighbors, this is going to continue until the project's completed. Where we will keep checking during these severe storm events to make sure that things are functioning and operating the way they should be during the pre-constart, pre-con, during construction period and then post-construction. Up, up to when the as-built plan is reviewed and confirmed. This will not be a lifelong thing.
Yeah, a developer is only obligated to leave it on the conditions that there is no more runoff than it was before. Not to improve the runoff that was before.
Correct, correct.
Board Members, any more comments? Having read the reports from Beta and the emails as included in the packets? All right, do I have a motion? There is, this is not, this is not a public hearing, there will be no public comment tonight. There will be no comment, there will be no public comment.
Did you receive the letter?
There is.
I submitted a letter at ten o'clock this morning, was the letter transmitted to you?
Mr. Karister, please sit down. Thank you. Stephanie?
A letter received after ten o'clock, after the binder went out to everyone.
Thank you.
And it was a restatement of information that was conveyed at the last meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Board Members, do I have a motion?
The motion would be to approve the architectural plan.
Architectural plan?
We've seen these before, I have to.
Yes.
The motion to approve the architectural plans for lot one.
Do you have a second?
Just a card, is it just lot one and then lot two separately?
It's just lot one is right, but it was lot one is what is before us tonight.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Uh, the second lot is for a different subdivision.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's separate.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, you're right, I'm on the wrong page, I'm sorry.
All right, did I, do I have a second for the plant, for the approval of the plans?
I'll second that.
All right, any further comments from the board? Seeing none, Zygmunt?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Katam?
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye. All right, moving on to Weber Farms, architectural plans, lot six for hometown builders. Excellent. If you could introduce yourself, please, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Mike Peterson. I live at ten Rainbow Circle, Easton. I've been in town for about forty-four years. I've been a licensed contractor since eighty-three. I've built over a hundred and fifty houses, hands-on. Thirty of them in East, over thirty, and I lost track. Over thirty in Easton and also a hundred and ten condominiums in Norton in my forty-four years of experience. I'm, 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 I'm tough with words, but I'm glad to see you guys have grandchildren. Nice, you like your grandchildren. I hope you do the best for them. That's what I'm trying to do. And I, this, I bought a lot, I haven't bought a lot. I'm thinking of buying a lot at Weber Farm. The subdivision is stale. You know that. Partly because you're making the people use Hardy Plank. I'll build there, but not if I have to use Hardy Plank. If you'd like to know, I, I think contractors in the past have tried to explain to you the problem with Hardy Plank and have gone into something different. I don't know if you have ever looked at the problems with it? Are you interested in seeing the problem in it? And that's what I'm here to present to you.
So you have the floor and you can present?
Okay, great.
You can go ahead, within limits. Within the, within, within limits, we'll let you, I'll let you proceed. And I believe the last time we did actually ask you to bring back materials.
Last time we were in a meeting, I guess I would have to make up or mock up different things to do as far as different types of site. I want to use mine. I also would like to just have you guys just take, the plan that I proposed, okay? It's changed in different ways, but this is the plan that I proposed.
Is this what's included in the packet?
No.
It may have changed a little bit since last time, but.
Has this been submitted to, to you, Stephanie?
Then, then.
Okay.
Highlight the changes after that.
Yeah.
Go ahead with your presentation.
Yep.
This is the new one, this is less detailed.
So if you look at the second page, you'll see some little snippets out of the internet called Hardy Plank.
Sorry, can I just interrupt?
Yeah, now, now, yeah, you're presenting, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay. Uh, go ahead, Joanne.
Is there something that I'm not seeing? Do you guys have something that's not in the packet?
I'm so sorry, he's got, he's got examples, the last time we had asked this.
Oh, the samples of actual materials, okay.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Can you see it? On the chair?
I can only see, I can't see below the presenter's waist. Yeah, now I can see them if you hold it like that.
When I get to it, I'll show you.
Excellent.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so, you know, to kind of get to it, you know, we can, we can, I can go through this display and I can show you how, if you look at Hardy Plank upside down, that it lets wind.
Again, Joanne can see.
It lets wind and rain blow in.
Can you put it on the, Madam Chair?
Would you be able to put it on the table, please? And then I think Joanne will be able to see. It's a little bit difficult in a hybrid meeting, I know, but thank you for your patience.
So, that's, that's a mock, so.
Joanne, can you see that? What, Amos, near Amos? Oh, we lost your sound.
We lost your sound.
Yes, I can see it now.
Okay, awesome, excellent, thank you, proceed, please.
So this is, this is vinyl. This is vinyl.
That's vinyl. This is Hardy Plank. This is what you want me to use or what, that's what you suggested you.
And just to clarify, just to clarify, if we may just for a second, that is what's used on the rest of the houses so far in the, in the development.
Okay, so, I want you to just look at the video. This is Hardy Plank. Now, this video was taken.
So, Madam Chair, this, this wasn't, there was no request made to provide audio and video? And it's put anyone in the audience and particularly our member at a disadvantage.
Yeah, so.
Well, all four of you can see it.
Correct, but we have a, we have someone, we have another member who's online, so it just, not using, if you could stop that, we're not going to use that piece.
So just continue. What's happening is, I'm tapping, I'm tapping on the siding. I'm tapping, not with, just, just gently tapping and then just lightly putting my fingers up. And the, because Hardy Board is all blind nailed. Do you know what blind nailing is? No, you can't see any nails. They cover it with the, the top one is blind, you can't see it. So there's nothing holding the bottom in place. So the clapboards all move. Now, this has happened, the videos I've taken here, or here's the photographs I've taken, I've put in here. You can just pass it around if you like. These are the problems with Hardy Board.
I care, sorry.
I can just clarify, is, is it all siding blind nailed?
No. No, no, let's see, it is not blind.
So they put it right into the, to the weather portion?
It picks up the previous course and goes down. And so there, now, the problem with it is, do you remember the rainstorm last week? So that's why I marked this up. Rain doesn't always fall down this way. Rain goes this way, rain goes this way. So I will guarantee you that every house up at Weber Farms has wet sheathing. And the Hardy Board is going to fail. Now, I'm building, I've got maybe one house left in me, I'm looking to move my daughter. My daughter and her wife, and they have a granddaughter now, and they would like to move back to Easton. There's no lots available. It's about the only one we can come across. I'd like to move them back to town. She's in the military and she's been transferred around. So she got caught in the squeeze play where prices have gone through the roof. Houses are a million dollars now, if you don't know. And this is what happens to that product, this is hardy board. That's, that's your 50-year warranty, right there, that's your 50 years, and it's cost genic. That's why I wrapped it up for you. If you want to know the integrity, I can just. Okay? Hardy board will tell you, oh, this stuff is wonderful, it's not, and they've been sued for telling you that it's going to last 50 years. This, this one, Dick Quinn on Swanamette in Easton, put hardy board on his house, five years, he ripped it off and made, Hardy board did not warranty it, not, gave him pretty much the finger. Chestnut Farms in Rainham, whole apartment complex, got seven years out of it, ripped it off, put vinyl on. So, I guess what's my point? My, my point is, I can't move my granddaughter and my daughter and daughter-in-law into a house made of this stuff for a million dollars. It's a bad product, people get on, it's a bad product, so where, where are we at? What can you guys do? From what I understand, it's all about the one that was had to be made affordable, that was made to rip vinyl and put hardy plank on. Nice going, guys, you didn't do them any favors. If you take a look at vinyl and see how many courses and ripples this water has to go through.
Again, make sure that Joanne right there?
Okay, so I'm holding up a piece of vinyl, and this water would have to go down, up, sneak its way up in here and then down in order to get behind. You can, you can hurricane vinyl, your sheathing is not going to get wet, it's a raincoat. This is a woolly sweater. So what happens when it gets wet, and it does get wet? It fails. Now, I've been in the building for a long time and I remember we had the problem with asbestos. Well, we've got the same problem here. What are you going to do when a kid walks past us eating this? That was the threat of asbestos, and this is going to happen here. So, what I propose, because the houses up at Chestnut, up at Weber Farm, those houses will fail prematurely. They will not last, they will fail within, if they, if they get 15 years, God bless you, that's all you'll get. So then what are you going to do? What are you going to do then, when you, and now you've got an affordable up there, you're supposed to wash that stuff and maintain it every year. If you don't, it's going to fail. If you look at these pictures, see, this is the mobile station, this is, this is the mobile station right here. It's cement board, it's heavy.
If you could please, once again, just as a reminder, we have someone online.
I want to show you. This, they, Hardy board has said, oh, well, okay, well, we've improved it, oh, this is the way you do it, oh, you do it like this now. So, what they had was a problem with it butting up to the corner board. So they came up with a channel, that you'd put it in a channel, like this is in a channel. Well, that only made it worse, because now, the butt end of this, every time it rains, gets wet. And you cannot get hardy board wet, it's a great interior product, it's not an exterior product, as they would have you believe. So, cut through it all, I think that if there's anything that you need to do, you need to, I want to put vinyl on that house. And I want, whatever you need to do, I've talked to the neighbors, I've talked to the building inspector, I've talked to the town manager, I've talked to somebody, this is an important issue. I've gone up to Foundry Street, the houses are vinyl. The common area is hardy plank, it's, they haven't even moved in, it's already failed. It's already getting wet. What they did, and what you have to do with hardy plank, is you have to wrap the entire building in butyl. You know what butyl is? About three feet sticky, it's this really gooey rubber that goes around, you lap it up as you go, the hardy board is only, it's not doing anything, it's only for looks, so.
Thank you for your, for your presentation on the vinyl and the hardy board. So now I'm going to ask the board members, do you have any, any comments?
Well, I do not have, I wasn't on the board when the request for this hardy board came, as a, as a, as a spec that needed to be, how, how that happened? Can you explain, Stephanie? Why it needs to be hardy board?
I believe it was a standard that the board at the time felt was, I think they felt it was a superior product. The idea was that this was to be a subdivision that had unique and interesting character architectural elements.
Aesthetically.
Aesthetically. And that the hardy board was more aesthetically pleasing and looked more natural than the vinyl siding. And at this point in time, the majority of the houses are constructed with the hardy board.
I remember a discussion on all fours about the restoration of that house.
Of the.
We talk about hardy board, and I remember very clearly that Bill Humphrey said, no hardy board on that house. Because of the problem of maintenance and painting and all that. And we accepted that, that claim from Bill Humphrey at the time. It wasn't long.
Now, are you talking about when Bill was talking about his subdivision? Or commenting on the affordable unit?
No, I'm commenting about the restoration of the.
Oh, the, that's right, yeah.
You remember that?
Yes.
And we talk about board, and he, we all agree not to put hardy board on that house.
Um, could you clarify, I'm not familiar, I'm trying to follow.
I think it was hardy board, I think they did use.
It was a restoration?
Yes.
And he was going to do an additional addition on the side, and no hardy board on that one.
Yeah. I mean, what I've heard Mr. Humphrey claim is that there is a higher life, a higher lifespan to the product than what Mr. Peterson is claiming. But Mr. Humphrey is partial to vinyl.
Yeah, the maintenance was the issue too.
So the issue we're being asked to weigh in on here is that there's a neighborhood covenant, a restriction that says thou shalt use hardy board?
It's not, it's, again, this is a subdivision that was approved, giving the, with the condition that the board would have approval of the design? And materials that, primarily the design of, of the product. And again, the intent was that there would be a consistency of look, not, not cookie cutter, not everything all the same, the designs are a little different, they have kind of a theme to them. But they are each different, but that the materials would be consistent.
This is right off of Bay, right? Down by.
Yes.
Yeah, last night before the shores, yeah.
I have a question for you. Are there, there vinyl siding that has the look of the clapboard? Meaning, being aesthetically pleasing and not just.
Absolutely. And to, just to reiterate with the plan, okay, there's a lot of detail on the front of this house. It's, you're not, the, the columns and the posts will be exactly the same as anyone else. The railings, any white railings needed, will be the same as anyone else, we're putting some freeze boards on it to break up any long walls. You'd be really hard pressed to go by unless somebody told you to look at it. To see that, oh, that this one is different. Yeah, the, the, the one comment people have is, it has a shine to it, but that fades in a couple of years and it looks just like. I brought other pictures just for, to talk about restorations, you know, they talk about siding and, and, I mean, the best is this. Barring none, that's the best siding there is. Pat and, and Mike Conley up at 37 Center Street, do you know their house, that yellow house they just redid? 1870.
The old Mansard Colonial?
Yeah, 1870. With red cedar, they'll have it till you last 20 years. I have pictures of my house, it's 40 years old, clapboard, red cedar. So it does last, it lasts long, that's the best. This will go, this product right here, I, I have had down on the ocean since 1985, this will go 60 years. Barring none, this is monogram, comes in 20-foot lengths, you have hardly any seams, it, it expands and contracts, it does what it has to do, and this will go 20 years. People have gotten five out of this.
What about the existing residents there, are they having any problems with their siding?
Well, they don't know it, I'm sorry, it's too new. And, you know, in all fairness too, I mean, a lot of this product was really emphasized as being a great product. And a lot of people believed it, and they, Georgia Pacific did a great job in marketing it, and it might be good in the desert, it might be good in Arizona, it really might be, like a mission tile roof, it's a great roof, but, so. Kind of misspeeled, it's not a good product, I don't want to move my daughter, but I want to build them out in Easton.
One moment, please, yeah. Alan's question, so, we didn't receive comments or concerns from the current residents about the product failing. But what you did receive was a letter that's in your packet, that they are concerned, again, about the look of inconsistency of materials.
I read that, I was just curious, they've had their, their siding up for seven years, if they're seeing any degradation.
That was going to be my comment, thank you.
Anybody's having any problems with it, but clearly if they're championing it.
Just tap on it, that's all you've got to do, you have to tap on it. It's, you shouldn't, in my opinion, shouldn't be allowed.
Any more comments from board members?
Mickey, if I may, I think, I think, so, I redid my entire exterior of my house recently and we decided to go with vinyl. I think you can find pros and cons for every material out there, depending on the builders that you talk to, and often, it's the installation really that matters as well too, because if you get that wrong, then your product's going to suck anyway. I think my, I think the challenge here is that this was a decision made, I wasn't on the board at the time when this was originally pushed for this development. I think if there was an expectation for that development to be built with hardy board, and the affordable housing unit had to remove their vinyl and have hardy installed. I can't see how it's fair to any of those people to now not require it of this house. I completely respect, you know, your presentation and, and wanting your daughter to have what you think is the best material for her home. For me, it's just a question of fairness and, and the precedent issue that it sets. I'm really struggling to see how we can, you know, overcome that. If we say that you can do vinyl, then, then how do you, you can't undo what's already been required by the town before.
I appreciate your, I, I just asked a question though, so what happens when it fails and they have to replace it? Is, is, is there now, what happens, do they have, what do they do?
That's outside the purview of the board, that, that, that is just outside kind of our, our purview.
So what do they do though?
So as Joanne mentioned, side, any, it all depends on the installation, anything can be installed properly or can fail. Yeah.
No, no, it cannot.
I'm not going to get into back and forth.
It cannot, I'm sorry.
I would just, just to that point though, I recently had vinyl installed and two strips flew off in the recent storm, so.
Two what?
Yeah, two strips of the whole vinyl flew off the side of my house, had to be reinstalled.
Yeah.
Specifics though, depends on what brand you used and what product you used also.
It was certainty, which is pretty well respected, sorry, Mickey.
That's, no, no, totally fine, I'm just, I'm trying to eliminate some of the back and forth here. I do want to follow up on something you said, Joanne, and that's pretty important to me, which is precedent, which is out of the precedent of this board, and again, I also was not on this board at the time all of this was decided. But we're setting a precedent here in terms of how we move forward, if the precedent has been for this and we continue to go with the same hardy board, we're recognizing the decisions made and from prior, prior board members. If we choose to kind of move forward with the vinyl, we're saying in future decisions, if things like this come up again, we, we will kind of vary considerably from what has been decided in the past, if that makes sense? Trying.
I think it does, Mickey.
That one, because I replaced all the cardboard in my house with vinyl.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm more concerned not with the specifics of the product here, but the, the idea of precedent in terms of what we're saying, it kind of as a board? Is, is more, what Joanne said really struck a chord with me with that, Alan?
I'm just wondering if there's, there's a compromise solution and just use the cedar? I think everybody agrees that it's the most attractive option, may be a little more expensive. It's not vinyl, it's not hardy board, and nobody can complain that it doesn't look, you know, superior, I mean, hardy board was designed to look like cedar.
And so I asked the question, you replaced your house with, recently, and you just replaced yours, why didn't you use red cedar?
Too expensive.
Vinyl is vinyl.
Because, because you, you went, you went with the best product. If I, if I may, if I may just.
If you may, if you may not, please let the board speak, like, we've got, I really want to stop the back and forth, it seems like every time I'm the chair, it, people, we get a lot of back and forth, and I would really love to stop that precedent of all precedents, so if you could please let Amos speak.
Well, it's price, but if you, if you can put cedar, probably is the best of, of both sides for this. That solves the problem.
Very much so.
It's not clapboard, that solves the problem.
Joanne, did you, any other board members have any other comments or questions before move for a motion? Yep?
I just, I just wanted to add one more thing, I think if we're talking about precedent here, I think too, the, the concern is if we do require hardy board on this house, does it set a precedent, you know, for material requirements on future projects as well too? Or does it only apply to this development? So if there's no development in town, are we going to require hardy board for that development? Or, I mean, where do you draw the line on that?
Yeah, I, I, if I can, if you don't mind me responding really quick, and then, I, I would say the only precedent set would be the, specific to the Matthew circle and specifically to the fact that the affordable was required to have the hardy board, and so to be consistent across the line. I'd say it would stop here and it should not pertain, and we can even include it in any motion, that it should not pertain to anything other than, yeah, just, just to this, just to this and the Matthew circle.
I mean, my opinion is that if you're going to build the house and you have to warranty it, I'd be concerned if we force an inferior product and then it would fail.
Especially the affordable.
Well, we've already done it to the affordable, they've already required the hardy, hardy board on the affordable. So, I get, is, and the affordable was done how many years ago?
Just a couple.
Just a couple?
Or not even.
Okay.
I think that they, and, and again, it was the look, the reason for the board needing to say, you need to correct this, was that it was built without the architectural features? That the, the details that made the, the house designs unique? And it, and, and it was built with vinyl? And I am not an expert, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert, I know what I see, I know what appeals to me when I'm, I'm driving around, the, the quality just didn't necessarily look like the same quality as the rest of the units in the house. So an affordable unit cannot look discernibly different than the other units, and this clearly did. And the color was, the color was different, and I understand the color that it was was less expensive, but that was fine once you added back the detail and the same quality of materials? Or the look of quality.
So, moving back just really quickly to what Alan said, if the rest of the development has kind of been required to, for the aesthetic, to use the hardy board? And there's been no liability, there's no liability to the board there, correct? Then there would be no liability to continuing the aesthetic appeal here, just, 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 if the board should so move in that direction, correct? I don't know if it makes sense. I don't know if that makes sense.
I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, yeah.
This is the first time that question has been asked.
Okay. Do we want to maybe pause and get a town council's opinion on that before moving forward? Or, I don't know. Just one minute.
That's not an issue.
I did, but I did say just one minute.
Okay.
Thank you. What would the board prefer to do? Or...
We've been given evidence of class action suits on the product, so I don't know.
So I'm just gonna, I'm sorry.
Did it that information or had it, I mean, that's...
Yeah.
And so, I'm just going to say, yeah.
I think, I was just going to say, none of us in this room, I don't think, are qualified to answer which product is the best and which one's not going to fail. I think that's a whole different level here. I think, I think the question is, you know, do we, do we follow with a precedent that was set for that development and stay in line with that out of fairness? Or do we believe that, you know, requiring the developer to choose their own material should be, you know, more important in this case?
Thank you, Joanne. I do just want to point out with the evidence we've been presented as a librarian, it's an AI overview, there are no cited sources or there's no reputable sources. And it's no shade on what you've presented, but what you've presented to us is an AI overview. There's no documentation, there's no .gov sources, there's no sources that have weight when one comes to consider evidence.
What you're looking at?
Correct, this is an AI overview.
That's why I brought this.
This...
That's why I made, that's why I went to the trouble.
I just, for the, for the record, I did just want to, for the record, I just did want to say that the information you've provided while is very helpful, also is not, and I'm just speaking in my profession as a librarian, I would, this is not, it's, we would ask for more or more reputable.
I mean, I will tell you that...
And when I say reputable, that's a professional term, that's not, no shade on what you have presented, I promise.
That Wayne Beitler, who is our community planner and has a degree in architectural, in architecture, and also is, seems to be knowledgeable about certain products, believes that hardy board is a quality product and a reasonable alternative to the wood product. But...
And I will, yeah. I will just say being, sitting on the historical commission, same, I sit, I don't have direct knowledge, but I sit with a lot of folks who do. And they consistently recommend and that folks use the, this material. Hello, puppy. Sorry, I'm looking at Joanne's.
Sorry.
So, do we have enough information to make a decision, folks? Do I have a motion? Do I have a recommendation? We can either vote to...
I don't know what the motion should be.
The motion could be either to require that the same material is used in the, this house with the, using the hardy board. I'm drawing a blank on it, I'm so sorry, correct?
Yeah, hardy board.
Using the hardy board in this building as with the rest of the development, or to allow the builder to choose. And approving the plan?
Yeah, and we...
Did I have that correct, Stephanie? I'm sorry.
Well, I think, you said choose?
Yeah.
But is it a specific choice? Because again, my understanding, and hardy board seems to be a particular product. It's a branded product. I don't know if there are off-brand products out there, but the boards use the term hardy board. My understanding is that there are different vinyl products, and they're not all the same, and they're not all the same quality. So to say, to allow them to choose could end up with something that really is not...
Okay.
I did ask that question.
I'm sorry?
So, we decided for hardy board, hardy because of the looks. But if there is anything that looked like that, close enough, is acceptable. So, the motion should be hardy looks and not hardy board.
So I have one question with that, with a motion, because that's a subjective, that's a subjective term, like, how close should it be? I guess that's...
I don't know, I don't want to sentence this house to be the same failure as the other house and be on a class suit as well.
I think that's my...
For carcinogenic materials on top of that. So I would not vote for that.
Do...
So what you're saying is we should potentially make a motion that would say that it needs to have the same look and feel as the existing homes when viewed at a distance of 30 feet?
Yeah.
Something like that.
And as complementary to that, we would like to see the material before the installation.
I was going to suggest that maybe seeing the material. So, that is exactly what you're doing.
That's the best. That's the point for us, that if you look at the thickness of it, that's, that's the best.
So this is...
I don't think, I don't think seeing this tonight spises to that.
Correct.
We want something that is true, that doesn't have the problem of the hardy board, but it looks like the hardy board. We don't want the best.
I understand. And I think what will, I don't think you'll be disappointed with the design and the architecture and the pitch, the roof, the columns. If you look at that house on the front, it's very little of it is actually, you can even see what is clapboard, because there's a porch in front of it and a roof, a lot of this barges, there's a break. So it's, it's not a wall of, of, I can make it look like every other house in there, that's what we signed here.
Can I ask one clarifying question as well? You've presented these, but these have not been submitted anywhere. You're still the elevator, what we're looking at in the packet with the details is what we're approving, not this. Because there is much less detail in what you have provided to us tonight than here. So, I just want clarifying...
Not really, not really. This is actually the same. This has got more detail. This doesn't, this barge doesn't go across, this one has added detail here and added detail here. That looks more because when I first presented it to Stephanie, it had a lot, I was trying to conform to what was up there. And what I saw when I went up to Matthew Circle was tin roofs and board and battensiding. That's what I came up with. So I said, oh, that must, because there was nothing written as to exactly what you were supposed to do. So I went in blind and I drew what I thought, you know, and she took a look at it and said, well, a little too many, so I started to take it out, and a lot of it did not come out. So that looks like it's more detail. It's actually, this actually has more.
But we can't approve this because you haven't submitted this officially, correct, Stephanie? Like, this is my question, is that this does not...
I mean, if the board feels they had enough time, but Joanne doesn't have, Joanne doesn't have the benefit of seeing this.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
And holding this up to the screen is not an adequate measure.
That's what I'm trying to say, yeah. This is just...
But it's very similar to what you had before.
But this is different, and I'm, I will just say personally, I would not approve something that everybody can't see.
And also, Mickey, this doesn't show the materials. The materials need to be shown on the plan, the elevations, the dimensions, which I believe is shown on the other plan, because that was one of the comments I also made, that this needs to be an elevation that shows all the detail.
So, would you like to come, would you like to continue this? And would you like to come back on the 6th of January, which is the next time this board meets? Could you let me finish and please don't talk over me though?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Would you like to come back on January the 6th and present kind of what you're planning, your final plan is, with all of the detail that Stephanie suggested? Would that work for you?
No. Because in Easton, if I don't get a permit by the end of this month, that house has to be heated with electricity.
I'm sorry?
Yes, no lie. You cannot burn fossil fuel in Easton after December 31st and after July 1st.
Sir, one more time, please don't talk over folks as we're talking, okay? Thank you.
I believe the new state code goes into effect the end of the year. It's not an Easton thing, is my understanding, it's the state code.
Okay, so you...
That's my understanding.
So you want to get these approved by the end of the year so that you do not have to heat the house with electricity, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What you've presented to us now is not going to work, because again, this is a hybrid meeting, we have someone on Zoom, and she can't see this, so she can't vote on it. Like, she literally cannot vote on it. Because you've presented us with something different that you're saying is new.
How different is it? It's not different. It's the same plan.
It's different. I'm not going to get into back and forth, it's different. So you have two choices. You can come back on the 6th, you can work... You can come back on the 6th presenting, or we can go with the plans as you have presented, and we will hold you to these plans that are in our binder. Which would you like?
I'm not quite sure what you're...
So we have plans here that Steph, we do need more information on these plans, correct?
I think, I think the ones he submitted had all the details, they're fine.
These are good. If you want to do these, which is the plans you have given the three of us tonight, but our person on Zoom cannot see it. Correct? Amos?
What are, what are the differences between the two?
There's a few lines on the, on the front, and they put an option for a tin roof, which probably we'll not do, we'll probably do asphalt, but...
So, if I may...
Yes, go ahead, Stephanie.
The differences are that you've been provided with something here tonight that we haven't seen before. In just looking at it quickly, it looks different. And it does not have, it doesn't call out the materials like the plan needs to. It doesn't show the dimensions, which need to be shown on the plan.
Even looking at the windows, I would say...
And the one that he submitted previously, he does, yeah.
Presented something that is incomplete and it's not, it's different. So you will need to give that up.
You would go back to the original design, it's no different.
And that's it. And the first one is the one that calls.
So this is the one we're approving? Yes, Joanne?
But on this, it says things like, if I'm looking at the right one, which I hope I am, it says metal optional, you know, clapboard material, TBA, so doesn't that need to be finalized?
Yes. Actually, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, it does.
So this will need to be finalized? These are not finalized?
That's a final.
We can make that determination tonight?
No, actually, there's rules and regulations, yes, Stephanie.
Madam Chair, I feel like the board is being bullied.
Yeah, I think we're actually, so, we're going to, we're going to, you have the option, you just have the option to come back on the 6th, or you can come back on the 20th, which is the next two. Take your choice. But we cannot, and I will not move this forward because these do not match, and the ones we've been presented are not complete.
Well, let me ask you a question.
The last question, and then we're done for the night. Go.
So am I, I allowed to use the product I want or not?
We're not approving these plans, yet. So we're...
Are you approving the product?
Well, Mickey, if I may, I feel like we should give him direction on that. So if we're asking him to come back at the January meeting with a final plan, on that plan, he needs to know which material. So I think at least that decision needs to be made.
And, Madam Chair, clarity again? Would that be the brand? Because I think that's important, the brand and model.
Yeah.
I don't know if these have models, but I would imagine they have the equivalent of a model, each brand.
So we can approve kind of to come back on, would the 6th or the 20th work better for you, sir? And we're going to approve the material, that you have to come back and give us the specifics on, like what brand, what model, and then the updated plans.
So I'm going to come in with a plan with some material and specifics as to the material I'm going to use, but it's going to be, there's going to be a combination of conventional frame, conventional finished carpentry into the front of the house. The porch details and all that will be traditional wood or PVC. Any freeze boards, of course, would be PVC. And then the clapboard material can be vinyl. Is that what I'm, is that, a monogram, blah, blah, blah? Is that what I, he understanding?
This is, this is what we're going to put to the, kind of the, I'm going to ask the board to approve tonight, if we can give you that guidance, if the board approves that to go forward. My apologies, by the way, I'm losing my voice. Do I have a motion from a board member? For, to give guidance that, that the hardy board is not required, but to approve vinyl, the make and model to bring back to the board? I don't, does that need a motion, Stephanie, or can we just request it? Can we just give guidance? Or does it need a motion? I'm genuinely confused, I'm sorry.
I don't think we need a motion if we're just going to give guidance. I think the guidance is that it should capture the look and feel of the neighborhood from a distance, and that you should tell us what product does that and show it to us.
Yeah, I think that works.
Yeah, that works.
I agree with what you said.
And I'm sorry, Alan, you had suggested earlier to a distance, a certain distance...
Of 20 feet or something, you know?
Yeah. Something close enough, close enough but not so far away.
I think 20 feet is good because that's in here, in one of the neighbor letters, it talks about 20 feet to the street. So I think that works very well.
And if I may, if possible, if you could get it in the color that you'll actually use, I think that would be helpful as well to you.
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
Because, of course, the need to be, it has to fit in with the color, so I get it, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we will continue this. Would you like the 6th or the 20th? Those are the next two meetings in January.
How about the 6th?
Sounds great.
I think that's as good as any.
All right, we'll see you then.
And at that time, I'll get something a little bit more detailed as far as the plan and notations as to what's going to be used and...
And I'm sure Stephanie's office will be happy to meet with you to discuss specifics before the next meeting, to ensure that we have...
With a call ahead of time. So I'm not running out the door to a doctor's appointment.
Okay, so, blah, 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 and I'll get you with the things, and I'll give it to you, and then you'll distribute it, or I'll get copies to you.
Upload it.
You'll upload it. Great, thank you so much, everyone, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Merry Christmas.
Thank you. To you as well. All right. Next on the agenda, board business, the minute meetings from November 26. We have minutes to approve.
Motion to approve minutes, November 26.
Do I have a second?
Joanne, second.
Port Joanne.
I have to find my mouse and move it to the unmuted.
Any further comment? Seeing none, cut 'em. Weeks. Zigmet.
Aye.
And Wolf is an aye as well. There are no chair updates because I am not the chair, thankfully, and will be resuming my regular board status next meeting. Joanne?
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
So the next meeting on the 6th, is that a hybrid meeting so that we can actually see the material, or is it only virtual?
It's only virtual.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of problematic.
Can we change it to a hybrid?
Yes.
Okay. As long as the room's available, let's change it. Thank you for catching that, Joanne.
Thank you, Joanne. Is that the, that's right. Epiphany. Yes.
All right, do we have any planning director updates or...
Not tonight.
All right. We're good, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Zigmet, beat you to it.
All right, any further comment? Seeing none, cut 'em. Zigmet.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much for tolerating me. Everybody have a good night, and have a great holiday, however you celebrate.
And good luck.
Happy holidays, all. Bye.
Happy holiday. Happy, Merry Christmas, and happy Hanukkah.